Thank you all for being here tonight for the USD 489 Candidate Forum. We will start by introducing all of our candidates and then they will have two minutes for opening statements. We will accept questions from the audience in both verbal and written format. Please raise your hand if you would like to ask a question and a Student Government Association member will provide you with a microphone. If you would like to direct a question to a specific candidate, please refer to them by name and that candidate will be given the opportunity to speak first. All candidates will be given the opportunity to comment on the issue after. Candidates will be given two minutes to answer each question. Before we begin, we would like to take a moment to thank our sponsors for the event: the Student Government Association, the Department of Political Science, the Docking Institute, Tiger Media Network, the American Democracy Project, and the Hays Area Chamber of Commerce. Now we will bring our candidates in in alphabetical order by last name. Dr. Paul Adams, Jessica Ann Berg-Moffett, Dr. Cole Ingle, Alex Herman, Dr. Lori Hurdle, Luke Oborne, Craig Pallister, Alan Park, and Tammy Welbrot. You may all be seated. We will begin with Dr. Paul Adams, your opening statement. You have two minutes.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to meet with the citizens of 49 and to talk about what we're going to do. Well, first I want to talk about my qualifications is that I truly believe that the past is an indicator of the future and as a current board member, you've seen my voting record and you've seen my statements through board minutes. And consistently you've noticed that I've been focused on the guiding principles of quality education for every student. I also want to go a little bit deeper and share what I have learned and would still apply as a board member. And depending on who you are, you may have, when you hear the school board, different things may come to your mind, whether it's wise or unwise use of taxpayer funds, clueless or wise on a bond issue, unfair or giving the barn in negotiations. But basically, as a board member, we do the best we can and it's never going to be right for everybody. But I do have four key points that guide me. One is that the board, as a board member, we set the goals and the priorities and work with the school leadership to do this. And it's also important, my second point is to stay out of the weeds because we hire professionals, whether they're teachers, administrators, to do the job. But coupled with that is that we must carefully weigh the risk and benefits and be guided by our goals. We, for example, the Early Childhood Connection Center that we put in was a risk, but we believe the benefit will be there for everybody. And the other is to advocate for quality education, which whether it means fair wages and benefits for teachers, laptop initiative, good curriculum. But always be guided by quality education for every student, every day.
All right, thank you. Jessica Ann Berg-Moffett, you have two minutes for your opening statements.
Hello, my name is Jessica Moffett. I am a Certified Health Education Specialist. I have a four-year degree in public health with an emphasis in physical activity and exercise, and then an additional certification in program planning. So, one of the things that I wanted to look at most when I was considering my candidacy for the school board was what is the mission that I am trying to fulfill? So, the mission for the school district is to provide a quality learning experience for every child in every classroom, every day. And I think USD 489 does a really great job of already encompassing that on a daily basis. And I'm hoping that by serving on the school board, we can work together with several new faces hopefully, and a lot of new faces in the school district as well. But one of the things that I've noticed that might be missing a little bit and I'm hoping to bring back to the school board is the ability for our community to have a voice. Like I said, I'm an educator, I am a soon-to-be mother, class of 2038, and a business owner in the community as well. And I think it's extremely important to take a moment to express to all of our community members the importance of what the school board does and the importance of your voice for you to let us know what you find to be important and the need, whether it be for your child or just for the success of the Hays community as a whole. So, rather than having a mission statement for my own self, my goal is really just to help the community achieve that mission as a whole for the success, not only of the school district, but for the Hays community as well.
Thank you. Dr. Cole Ingle, you have two minutes for your opening statements.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, I cannot see any of you because it is very bright up here. But I'm Cole Ingle, I'm a lifetime resident of Hays and basically a lifetime educator. I'm an accounting professor at Fort Hays State University and currently serving my 11th year in the position. I hold a doctorate degree in advanced accounting, am and a licensed certified public accountant with a permit to practice in the state of Kansas. I chose to run for the school board mostly because of encouragement from current faculty and staff in the district who are my former teachers. I considered running multiple times before, but always had career and educational goals that I needed to meet before committing fully to the school board. Additionally, I do not believe in uncontested elections. And when I saw that only four people were running for four seats, I felt that now was the right time. Four other people had similar feelings, and now there are nine candidates for four seats. I'm hopeful that a new school board composition will help the district move forward in a positive direction. There is certainly nothing more important to a community than its public school system. Quality public schools provide the necessary foundation for everything else. I'm not sure I'm the best candidate for the Board of Education, but I'm certainly a qualified candidate. I'm a product of USD 49, graduating from Hays High School in 2002. I believe I was part of the system when it was at its prime. USD 49 provided me the educational foundation that is necessary and has been necessary for my personal and professional success. It's essential that individuals step up and ensure that those same opportunities are afforded to everyone who follow us. I do not have a platform, nor do I have an agenda. I'm not running for a seat on the Board of Education to bring sweeping changes or to shake anything up. I'm simply running to provide level-headedness to decision-making, to improve the overall culture and attitude of the board. I look forward to the Candidate Forum this evening, and I thank everyone for their attendance and participation, especially the team of students hosting this event. I remember well my time in the Student Government Association and how much work it was to put together one of these events.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Herman, you have two minutes for your opening statements.
For those of you that don't know, you know me, my name is Alex Herman. I'm a lifelong resident of Hays, Kansas, and I'm a local attorney here. I'm running for a school board here because the city of Hays and the community has given so much to me that I feel it's my duty to give back to them. Currently, I serve on several different boards, including the Board for Northwest Kansas Juvenile Services and Northwest Kansas Community Corrections. What led me to filing for, to run for school board is the fact that we have issues in this district. We have two prior school bonds that have failed, and we need leadership, leadership that will work to make sure we get a bond pass, leadership that will learn from why those previous bonds passed or did not pass, and that will work with the community to listen to their ideas and make a fiscally responsible decision that will make sure that the future infrastructure of this university, or of this community, is properly founded on firm footing. Although I'm not a graduate of Hays High, I do see that a investment in the community through the school helps all members of the community. My interests in running, my interest in running are to make sure that the community continues to be a good place for everyone to live, and the foundation of a solid community is in its schools.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, I'm saying 20 seconds, just to make sure everyone can hear what I'm saying, 20 seconds as well.
All right, Dr. Lori Hurdle, you have two minutes for your opening statements.
I'm Dr. Lori Hurdle. I'm proud to say that I just got that title and use it as more of a privilege than not. I am, feel that I am well-qualified for the position. I received my education here at Ford State, Ford State University, and have recently gotten my doctorate through Walton University. I have clinical experience through mental health, which I believe is important when you serve on a school board, when you're dealing with children and youth. I believe that I am very responsible, reliable, make good decisions, and have good judgment. I feel like the reason why I decided to run for a school board is to make a difference, not only for the children and the youth that's involved in the school district, but for the community at large and for the school district itself. I feel like that's the most important thing that is standing in my way of running. I raised a family in USD 49. It is important to me to be a part of that school district and to participate in all the activities. I had a child that has special needs, and as a result of that, my eyes and ears became very open to what was going on in the school district. And I believe that I can begin, I can begin to become an asset to many of those programs, many programs, and to maybe even open some programs or develop some programs that can be helpful to the students in the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Luke Oborne, you have two minutes for your opening statements.
My name is Luke Oborne. I have lived in Hays for the past 22 years, when I moved up here to attend Fort Hays State University. I am a customer sales supervisor with NexTech, I've been doing that for about 12 years. I've served on the 49 school board for the last four years. I'm also civic, very civic-minded, I'm in Big Bo's Big Sisters, a member of Knights of Columbus. As I said, I did graduate from Fort Hays State in communication, emphasizing in public relations. I am married to Kristi Oborne, who is a librarian and educator for 489 at Olafland Elementary. We have three children together, a third grader, seventh grader, and a senior at high school this year. I'm seeking reelection because I just don't really feel my job is done. I am pleased with several accomplishments over the past four years, including a little bit healthier budget, growth of our contingency fund. But there are a couple of goals that I kind of secretly held four years ago, that I don't think we have really accomplished yet. And that's build more trust with our employees and the general public, and really to begin to address our facility needs through some sort of a bond. As far as my experience, I have, like I said, I have served on the board for four years. I have a good understanding of the district's needs and our operations. Through my career experience, I've learned skills of budgeting, planning, sense a team, and accomplishing goals. I understand the value of every individual to help reach those goals. And I really feel that my service record up to this point kind of proves I'm a man of integrity. My voting decisions are based off of what I feel is the best decision for our children in our district, and you don't really have to take my word for it, you can go back and look at my voting history. That's me.
Thank you. Craig Pallister, you have two minutes for your opening statements.
Thank you. I'm Craig Pallister. I am, I was a teacher in Dodge City for 10 years prior to coming to Hays. Since then, I have been assistant principal for seven years in Dodge and Hays, and a principal at Hays Middle School for 21 years until I retired approximately a year and a half ago. My education, I have a Bachelors in Psychology from Fort Hays State University and a Master's in Educational Administration from Fort Hays. My family, I have two daughters that attended and graduated from Hays High School, and both have gone on and were very well-prepared to colleges. My youngest just graduated from Fort Hays State University, and my oldest received her Bachelors and her Masters from Kansas State University. I have lived in Hays for 26 years, plus five years going to Fort Hays State, so I feel like I have lived in the Hays community for 31 years. I'm running for the board to support the community, the taxpayers, the superintendent, the teachers, and all staff, paras, educators, secretaries, custodians, and bus drivers. Second, I want to support, and very important, the local businesses and vendors on bids through the school board when possible. Third, and very important, I want to retain and recruit high-quality teachers and staff. Fourth, all my decisions will be made by answering one question: is it good for students? And my last, I would like to the district to consider adding a public relations position so we know what the good things and what the needs of the district are.
Thank you. Alan Park, you have two minutes for your opening statements.
Thank you. My name is Alan Park, and I've lived in Hays for 37 years. I'm married to Patty, and she is a fourth grade teacher at Roosevelt Elementary School. Together, we have four children, they have all gone through USD 489. My oldest is a Master's Degree candidate here at Fort Hays State University. I have a junior daughter who's at Kansas State University studying animal science. I have a freshman here at Fort Hays State University who's studying graphic design. And my youngest is a junior at Hays High School. So, all in all, I have had students at 489 for 25 years and counting, and that has been a great experience for my family and provided many opportunities for all of us. As an educator, I have been an educator for 35 years. 31 of those years, I have served USD 49. I started out as a paraprofessional at Washington Elementary, teaching English as a second language. I continued by being a K-12 teacher, teaching at the elementary level, the middle school level, and the high school, and that was an awesome experience. I also coached both at the middle school and the high school level. I finished my career as a principal at Washington Elementary, Washington Elementary School for 25 years. That was a great experience. I also had the opportunity to be the migrant director and the transition coordinator when I finished up in 2015. This district has been an awesome place for my family, and we together feel we want to continue to stay here. And my role to become a board member is to help 49 become the best it can be for our students here in Hays.
Thank you. Tammy Welbrot, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Well, thank you to all the entities that have helped organize tonight, I know there were many. I am also to be honored to be part of a stage of very qualified professionals, and it's my pleasure to be considered with all of you. And certainly thanks to all of you that are in attendance tonight because I know it's your commitment and knowing how to vote on voting day, that certainly is the reason why we're here. I would need to do a shout-out to two special people in the audience, my husband Gerard Welbrot and my son, our son Garrett, who is a high school sophomore at Hays High. I had served the last eight and a half years as the Hays Area Chamber of Commerce President/CEO, and I left there in July to pursue my own professional coaching business, and that is called Girl Twin Solutions. Yes, I have a twin brother. And during my time as a Hays Area Chamber, I was also facilitating Leadership Hays, which is a community program that encourages and teaches about civic servant leadership. So when you have done that for almost nine years, it certainly was part of the reason why I wanted to be here today, in order to show you that I am doing what I had preached many years. As a young teenager, I watched my own father serve as a board member for my school district, which was in Healy, Kansas. I obviously came here for Fort Hays State and have been here pretty much ever since I graduated. What I observed of my dad's experiences throughout his multiple terms shaped me greatly in developing today my own ethical foundation and personal code of conduct. Characteristics of a productive board environment are as important now as they were then. I believe successful school board members should foster and encourage trust among all stakeholders. I believe they should empower and support those professionals who perform the daily operations by creating processes and systems which governance. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I have a series here of written questions already, but we will also take questions verbally, although I really can't see out there at all. So SGA reps, if you can holler, if you have someone with a question, so that we can make sure that we weave in those verbal questions with the written questions that I have, that would be great. So my first question, and we will start here with Jessica Moffett, what is the purpose of a public school education?
I believe there's a lot of purposes to the public school education. There's traditional ways that we think about education in the idea of math and reading and arithmetic, but I think there's also a lot more to it. I think there's the social demographic and really honestly preparing us for being quality members of our community. And not only does the success of the school district and of a public education position represent the student's success, but it also represents the community's success as well, and how successfully we will be able to integrate ourselves once we've graduated and walked across that stage.
Thank you. Dr. Cole Ingle, same question, what is the purpose of a public school education?
I think the purpose of a public school education is to make sure that we educate our citizens to prepare them to take care of us, much like those that came before us took care of us, and so we need to pass that forward. And I think public school really prepares students to succeed in the American dream and making sure that students can participate in what we're doing right now, and participate in democracy, and participate in community boards, and take care of their families and take care of each other. And I think public school is really the best way to do that, so that we can develop the whole student, not just academically, but also socially and personally.
Thank you. Alex Herman, what is the purpose of a public school education?
Well, in short, it's to educate the public. As a community, we have a duty to make sure that our citizens are properly educated so that they can one day take our place as leaders of the community, and to make sure that we're properly taken care of in our old ages as well. Public education provides that opportunity for everyone. We're very lucky in this country and in this state to have a public education system as great as we do that makes sure that everyone gets an educated, that this isn't just something that the elites get to have, that every single person in every walk of life makes sure that they have the same opportunities as everyone else, and the key to that is through public education.
Thank you. Dr. Lori Hurdle, what is the purpose of a public school education?
I believe a public education is important to the community at large, as well as to the students that it represents. One of the things that we know is that we have students that are very academically inclined to do major things in this community, and the public is, who is helping to educate those students. And the good thing is, is that our students then turn around and educate those people, the public and their own children to do the same thing. I believe that it's something that's, it's something you give and take. You give them an education, and they'll give us an education as well. We have excellent students in this, in this community, and we like to learn from them as well.
Thank you. Luke Oborne, what is the purpose of a public school education?
At the end of the day, obviously, it's just to educate and prepare our students for the future. That could be through life skills. I know some of the times we're talking about even things like reading and writing, but it could be even things like accounting. As we get to the, to the high school level, it's going to be really what we would call more of that college and career readiness, and that could be, you know, four-year college, that could be a technical college. But really, this day and age too, a lot of students are just going straight for career, and that's really okay too. One of the things I'm really pleased with is if you've ever looked at some of the programs that Hays High has where students can do things like automotive, and they can, and take that even at that high school level. So really, for me, it's about giving, making sure we're giving our students the tools and the talents that they're needed to succeed in the future.
Thank you. Craig Pallister, what is the purpose of a public school education?
The purpose of a public school education is to educate academics, but the social and the emotional as they go through the K-12 is so important. We can teach all the academics, but our students need to be able to socially and emotionally handle as, as they move into the post-secondary, and that is so important anymore with the training that is now available, the tech colleges and the universities that meet all the needs of all of our students. So, only teaching academics will not make it. We need to make sure they can handle the social and emotional needs of being a responsible adult as they move into this training.
Thank you. Alan Park, what is the purpose of a public school education?
Well, we've had a lot of good answers, and the public school is extremely important, not only to do the academics and the content area, but also through athletics and civic groups, they learn how to collaborate, they learn teamwork, they learn to be ready for the workplace. And all those things are part of developing good leaders to take over, like they mentioned, to take over our place. Public education educates everybody. They, they give them the best education, no matter who they are, and they provide the best they can do so that they, the students can be prepared and do the best that they can be in the next level.
Thank you. Tammy Welbrot, what is the purpose of a public school education?
Well, certainly, I agree with every comment that has been shared so far, and truly, it is to prepare our young people to be able to go out into this world and be a fully contributing member of society, whether that is having the skill sets, the confidence, the tools, the intelligence, whatever. But I think there's one element that hasn't been shared that I believe makes a difference between public school compared to other education, is also the fact that the school system, the school district, is a driver of our economic. They certainly are, the impact of what the school does for our community from the employment of hundreds of people, as well as the providing the quality of life for so much more than just the students. So I think it's, it's certainly, it's a, it's a mix of pieces and parts that goes together to provide ultimately that foundation for the student.
Thank you. Dr. Paul Adams, what is the purpose of a public school education?
And it's kind of an interesting question for me because I started live training as a physics teacher, and if you'd asked me more years ago than I'd like to say, I'd say it's to learn physics and that's it. But, but I've kind of broadened that, and to me, what it really comes down to is preparing students for post-secondary life. And that incorporates many things that we've heard up here, is that it's partly the skills to learn, because what we prepare for today is not what may be there tomorrow. It's also a, the civic duty, because that is a part of the public school system, it is to help produce good citizens, and that's part of it. Skills and workforce development, that's become a big portion that our Commissioner of Education has been pushing, and we've seen a good example of that this week, or last week, rather, with the CTE pathways that we're doing at the high school. Social-emotional learning has become more important as we've moved in, and it really wasn't always a part of what we've done. And career preparation as we do it. And also a knowledge of the world, a knowledge of the world of work. So I see that has changed, and I think the other part is to think that that process begins in preschool and goes all the way through 12th grades, and we begin to look at it, all of these features have to be there from preschool, and we develop, because when we look at it as a board, we're looking at that person that crosses the stage.
Thank you. The next question I have is directed to current board members, so we will start with the two current board members who are in the forum tonight, and then we will go alphabetically to allow the rest of the candidates an opportunity to address this issue. For present board members, why do we need at least 13 Suburbans? So we'll start with Dr. Paul Adams.
I could defer to my colleague, but I'll take that one. You know, that is, that's a reasonable question, and as a board, we have looked at that and addressed that. And part of it does come back to what we talked about, what's a quality education? Because what we used to call extracurriculars, like whether it's the Quiz Bowl, or whether it's sending students out to Colby to participate in the science lab night. it's sending students out to Colby to participate in the science lab night, or it's the football team going somewhere, the soccer team. Those co-curriculars are what developed those things that we just said we all value in our students, so that we believe is school there. But to achieve that, it does mean that we have to have a way to get kids there. And if you start looking at the number of activities and the number of things that our students are going to, those are going out and they're in use and they're in use effectively. And even running around town as we move kids that need special needs, that may need to move from school to school or move to the university if they, if that's part of their individualized education plan, I think those are used. So I don't think it's just having the vehicles, it's looking at the purpose of achieving the vision that we've all set.
All right. Thank you. Luke Oborni?
Well, I certainly can't disagree with anything Mr. Adams has said, sorry, Dr. Adams has said. I think one of the biggest things with, with like a Suburbans or anytime we're looking at any sort of replacement is always is, is there a need and what does it fit? And I know, like Dr. Adams said, I think we had a replacement Suburban maybe within the past year and it came up at that time. Do we need that and what's this for? And asking our, our director at that point in time, a lot of it is economics. You know, it's, it's cheaper, and I think Dr. Adams alluded to this as well, it's cheaper than it is than to run a bus. And sometimes you have maybe only a few students or something else and it's a lot cheaper to have a Suburban and run them around than it is the cost of a bus. And whether we're talking about just a short trip across town or to another event. And it, even being a school board member, I, I still don't know if I fully understand all the events that we have going on in all of our schools. There is just, there's so much opportunity and I love that and I want to support that. The other thing that I thought is kind of cool about the Suburbans or even some of our other fleet vehicles is those can be adult-driven. So as a parent, I have helped with the, the high school debate team before. It's a great experience, you get to get up really early in the morning, but those are something that you can, as a parent, you have to submit your license and everything else, but, but you can help and drive. And so you could also help be a part of that. And again, I'm, I'm not, I couldn't drive a bus, that's not something I'm qualified for. But there's just, as a taxpayer, I sure understand, do we really need that? I, I can tell you, I, I believe and I, I believe what my district is telling me, I believe my directors are telling me that there's a purpose for them and there's a positive from it, so.
All right. We will now give the other candidates an opportunity to address the issue as well. And we'll start with Jessica Moffett.
I think I have a little bit of a different outlook on this and the reason is for personal experience. So I personally have never rode in a, one of the 13 USD 489 Suburbans, but I do see them quite frequently. But my very first encounter with these Suburbans, I was volunteering at Hayes Med for a Career Pathways Day, which included not only students in Hayes, but students from Victoria and Ellis and some of the other smaller cities outside. And what those Suburbans provided us with was the opportunity for those students who did not have transportation to be able to come into a room with eight different career individuals who had the, the pleasure of being able to, to showcase what it is that we do, not only in our business, but also to advocate for our profession and really be able to reach out to a group of students that maybe we never would have had that opportunity for previously. And I imagine this is not the first nor only time that the Suburbans have been used for that. But since we have them and we are able to utilize them, the maintenance is minimal, like the other candidates have said, compared to things like buses and bus drivers. And the impact that it has on being able to help our community prosper and grow and help business individuals develop their business and expand, personally, I can say, was an absolutely wonderful experience. And for that, I am appreciative of the Suburbans.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Cole Ingle, your opportunity to address the issue.
So the question was, why do we need 13 Suburbans? And my response is, I have no idea how many Suburbans we need. I have not analyzed the travel budget, I have not, you know, looked in, into how many Suburbans we need. But I can speak to the fact that we need to make sure that students have the opportunity to travel to co-curricular activities. I know when I was in primary school and secondary school, that was a great opportunity. And I remember how disappointed I was after graduation, learning about all of the budget cuts and the number of co-curricular activities and particularly field trips that were limited because of budget situation and, and students not being able to participate in that. I think a lot of that has turned around. But the question was, why do we need 13 Suburbans? I have no idea if we need 13 Suburbans. So I can't really answer the question directly without the analysis of, of those budget numbers and, and what the people think. I, I really think this is a management question, maybe more than a governance or, or policy question. But if it's a concern of the district stakeholders, then it's something we should ask management.
All right. Thank you. Alex Herman, your opportunity to address the issue.
And I would, I would echo Dr. Ingle on that matter. I don't know why we need 13 Suburbans. I don't, I'm not the transportation coordinator for USD 489, nor am I currently on the school board. The, uh, the school board is very often tasked with managing, it's not very often, it's always tasked with managing public's money. We have school board who is tasked with making sure that money is spent wisely, that the dollars are stretched as far as they can, but at the same time that we're not pushing off costs long-term either, making the best financial decision for the school district. If we need 13 Suburbans, then we should have 13 Suburbans. If we need less, then we should work to get rid of them or get rid of some of them. If we need more, we should work to get more. If there's a more fiscally responsible opportunity, renting Suburbans instead of purchasing them, then that should be explored. Dr. Adams mentioned a Quiz Bowl. I had a personal flashback to myself in high school, was on the Quiz Bowl team. As you can imagine, myself and my teammates weren't very big guys. So I can imagine that taking a Suburban to a Quiz Bowl tournament's going to be a much better decision than taking a giant bus for five nerdy-
20 seconds.
-lanky-looking kids. So I, I see the benefit in using Suburbans as opposed to using buses. But at the same time, duty of the school board will be to make sure that, to be asking questions like this, to make sure we're always making the best financial decision for the school district.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Lori Hurdle, your opportunity to address this question.
I too believe that we need to be fiscally responsible in that type of situation as well as others. I, I don't know whether or not we need 13 Suburbans or not, but I do know that we do need our children and our youth to be participating in activities. And if that allows them to do so, then I think that that's a good fiscal decision on the part of the school district and would support that decision, obviously. If it's something that the Suburbans are just setting and not being used, then that's obviously not a good fiscal decision and would, would not support that. But again, like everybody else said, I'm not on the school board yet and don't know what the transportation officer says about that. And would welcome his, his opinion about that first before I make any, any decision about, about that as well. So that would be what I would have to say, I guess. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Craig Pallister, your opportunity.
From past knowledge of when I was at the middle school, there were days that, no, we didn't need all 13 Suburbans throughout the district, but there were a lot of days that we did. And it is hard to schedule and tell a group of first graders they can't attend something when another group of high school students are attending something else. And if a lot of our students needs the transportation daily to get from one school or one training area, so they are very important that we run the Suburbans. And from my past knowledge, I know it was always said that it takes three Suburbans to, the economics as taking one bus. So the cost of three Suburbans is still just about similar to taking one of the big yellow buses that you might see. And one of the things that is so important that we use our Suburbans a lot is for staff training and teacher training. They go out of town, they go to conferences, they go different locations so they can bring things back and those Suburbans are used for training.
All right. Thank you. Alan Park, your opportunity to address this question.
I would agree with, with Craig. My experience with the, the transportation coordinator has been to do that every day and they understand the needs and they are charged to do the best to be fiscally responsible. And they want to, they want, they have a certain budget and they have to be, be within that budget. As a parent, it's very important for me to, that we have a fleet that is safe and reliable, that they don't get down in Dodge City and there's issues. So it's important that we have a great transportation fleet. And we have an awesome group of bus drivers and, and the coordinator and that support staff that really works hard to make sure our kids are safe and that we have quality vehicles and they're maintained properly and they're, and then I'm sure the district has looked at the different ways to, if it's leased or purchased and which is the best way. And so that's something that we need to be in mind because our community is wondering about that. So we need to do a better job of communicating and educating our public why we have that many and the reasons for them.
All right. Thank you. And Tammy Welbrot, your opportunity to address the question.
The board's role is obviously the fiscal oversight of this budget that obviously maintains the USD 489. And I think a question to this nature flirts a little bit with the aspect of micromanagement in the sense that there may be a lot of reasons that are unknown to us and perhaps if the people empowered to do the job have looked at how many people have they hired that need to have the CDL license to drive the larger bus compared to perhaps a teacher or the coach or the advisor of a group could be a driver of Suburban. There may be a reason that we need to be able to empower the people making those decisions like a principal at, at the, the various schools to be able to decide what would be in the best interest at that time. And so if, again, the people are doing their job that, that reports to ultimately the superintendent, I, I think 13 Suburbans, I don't know if there's anywhere that there is advice on how many Suburbans should be for a specific school district and size, so.
All right. Thank you. All right. I have several questions related to health insurance. So I'm going to kind of group all of these together, but if you need me to repeat any of them as we kind of go down the line, please let me know. So I guess first kind of is more general in nature about your thoughts about the current health insurance program. And then more specifically, do you believe that a $3,500 deductible for health insurance is too high? And could anything be done about lowering that? And then thoughts on capping the health insurance? I'm not sure exactly what we mean by capping the insurance, but if someone who wrote the question wants to elaborate a little bit, I'd be happy to take some further guidance on this question. Sorry, I can't see anybody waving at me to tell me they would like that. So let's start with that and we will start with Dr. Cole Ingle to address the question first.
I was afraid you might say that.
It's your turn.
So, okay. When you run for a position like this and participate in a forum, you're expected to answer questions very quickly, on the fly. When you're professionally trained as a certified public accountant, the exact opposite is true. You do not answer questions without studying the issue, gathering the facts and doing a full analysis, which takes more than 30 seconds. I do not know much about the current program. I do know that it was recently changed. I know that as a state employee at the university, I participated in the state health plan. My understanding is that has changed at the school district. Is the deductible too high? I, I think that depends on a number of circumstances. For certain families, that deductible might be too high. For others, depending on plan chosen, maybe it, it wouldn't be. And I'm not sure about capping insurance if you mean with coinsurance or if you mean total out-of-pocket or if you mean, you know, what the individual cost would be. I do know that a compensation package, not only salary, but health insurance is a big deal for the employees in the district. And I think that certainly needs to be analyzed and a decision needs to be made as to whether moving away from the state plan or, or the plan that we currently have, whether that was a good decision or not.
All right. Thank you. Alex Herman?
I've spoken with several teachers in the district and I've heard repeatedly that they're upset with the switch in the plan. It's my understanding that they originally had Blue Cross Blue Shield, switched to Aetna. Someone correct me if I'm wrong on that. But the, the, the whole base of the issue here is that teachers are paying more out-of-pocket than they were before. And I think this is really a symptom of a bigger problem. That bigger problem being that, uh, the school board's inability to reach an agreement with the teachers' union in terms of an agreement, reaching an impasse for the last two years. The school board, the school board has a duty to make sure that the money for the district is properly spent. But at the same time, the school district also has a duty to make sure that our students are properly educated. And they're going to be properly educated when teachers, when we're keeping the best teachers, when the teachers are properly compensated and when we have a, a health insurance plan for the teachers that makes them want to stay in the district. I can't speak to whether or not $3,500 cap is too high. That, that can vary from family to family, from person to person. I certainly wouldn't be happy with a $3,500 cap on my health insurance.
20 seconds.
I think that the school board needs to work to come up with a deal with, with the teachers to not work at an impasse anymore, to make sure that the teachers are happy and are on equal footing with the school board to get a compensation package put together.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Lori Hurdle?
You know, I'm not real familiar with the insurance package that's offered to USD 489 employees. I wish I was. And if I was, I probably would have more comments about that. I am not even sure how I would feel about that, being a teacher. I, I agree with Alex. I think that that probably is a little bit of what's maybe happening is the impasse that is going on. I would like to change that as well. I would like to improve the, the overall package that's offered to teachers and, and that includes insurance. I think they would be happier. I think they would respond better to the school district if that was the case. But I guess I, I just, being in the position that I'm in right now, I, I feel like I don't have a lot of answers for what, what, what to do about that at this point. But I, but I would say that if I was elected to be on the school board, that would be one of the things that would be, would draw my attention is to be able to check something like that out. If there was a committee or, or something like that, I sure would be happy to join in that committee or, or at least be a part of, of that decision-
20 seconds.
...process if, if I could, if, if it was appiable to, to do that for sure. So, thank you.
Thank you. Luke Oborni?
So I'm hoping that's not my wife's handwriting because I don't want to be sleeping on the sofa tonight. Couple of things, I can, I can explain some of this. Some of this is going to negotiations this year. And so the deductible is currently on the plan that we, what we pay for the teachers, the $3,500 is the current deductible on the plan that, that the district pays for. There are other options, but, but that's where that number is coming from. Capping insurance is basically, again, negotiations this year. And the concept that's being presented is we, instead of a percent or something else, we, we basically set an amount that the- we, instead of a percent or something else, we basically set an amount that the teachers would pay for the insurance. So that's kind of where that number is coming from, too. I'm just going to plead the fifth and just walk out of this one. But no, I guess a lot of this is history. And, you know, so Blue Cross Blue Shield sounds like a great company. And I think they are a great company. The state plan was not good for us at that point in time. We were going to take a $1.5 million increase. And at that point in time, we really needed to find another option because the budget just wouldn't support it at all. Aetna was a good solution. It looked to be comparable. And you'll notice I use the word "looked." There are a lot of things that are very comparable. I cannot sit there and say it's a straight-to-straight match. So I guess moving forward, what I would like to see, and I know this has kind of come up this year with negotiations and everything too, is the state plan really limited us because it didn't show us our usage. It grouped us with everybody and everyone that was on the state plan. And so if other districts were heavy-using, we'd be penalized for that. Or even not districts, it could be counties and everything else. So getting off the state plan really brings us a lot of tremendous growth. We can look at our usage. And I do support some sort of a committee to look for other options. As long as the cost doesn't drastically increase, it doesn't matter to me who we go with. And I know it's worked well for the city of Hayes to kind of get off the state plan. They can look at their usage and then they're more viable to other options.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Craig Pallister?
Health insurance is a discussion, a talking point all across our nation at this time. If you watch the debates that are going on across the nation, and here in Hayes, it is no different. Several, a few years ago, the board made a decision, as Mr. Borne said, to get off the state plan and look at a, really a cheaper plan to allow money not to be spent for the medical on that. Comparing the insurance company that we have now to the one that was prior, it is not, from what I hear from a lot of people, a better plan. It doesn't provide what the past plan did, but it allowed the district to spend monies that were being spent for insurance to be spent different ways. And what, the lower the deduction, you would hate it, but you, if you lower the deduction, the price goes up with the insurance, that direction. And one of the key things is, our district needs to look more and more into being able to get health insurance for all of our employees. Right now, we have a lot of paraeducators, a lot of secretaries that don't qualify because, again, of a fiscal reason. And health insurance is a, just a need of families so we can get the best personnel working for our district.
All right, thank you. Alan Park?
Well, Craig is right. For businesses all across the country, health insurance is an issue. And for employees, I mean, they've seen their rates increase, increase, and continue to increase. And it's really a strain on the family. I think the cap is a concern just because it's one of those things from year to year. It's an unknown. I mean, there could be, like you said, 13% increase in one year. And that's just one thing that, another stress for teachers, not to know where that money's going to come from, if that's thrown on them, that they only have a certain amount and they're going to have to come up with the balance. I think that's one thing that the board will need to do is, that should be, are the board's concern, to figure out how to take care of those increases. I mean, that's what has been done in the past. And I think to put that other stress on the teachers is something that they're concerned about. And we should listen to that and figure out a way to make it right.
All right, thank you. Tammy Welbrough?
These last few months, I have taken an opportunity to meet with as many key representatives throughout the district as possible, including all of the building principals, the admin team, and a slew of other people, including teachers. And certainly, a theme that has been brought forward has been the quality of the health insurance. And, you know, I think that this is certainly something that the next board will need to look further into. I believe that the board was certainly doing what they felt was best at the time. And many of the people had expressed to me that there are generating issues. And it really isn't always just about the out-of-pocket expenses, but some of the quality of service issues that are becoming realized, which is certainly a concern. From a board of education perspective, I believe very strongly that we need to focus on the process of how we go about trying to make that right decision. And that's going to take collaboration and input from a lot of the stakeholders. I'd like to see the resurrection of the insurance committee get put back and forth so that they can continue to research and get more information to share with the board.
All right, thank you. Dr. Paul Adams?
Well, having been on the board and we made that decision to change our insurance providers, I will have to say that we had a difficult process of going through with that because we had looked at another agency that we thought we would get as savings, but we found that our experience, which basis determines our rate, was going to place us much higher. And the, as was mentioned, the idea that our costs were going to go up very high at the Blue Cross Blue Shield, we made the best choice to help the district's financial aspects. And with that, there was some savings initially that was returned back. Part of that was returned to the teachers. And so we're doing it. But now, as we're having experiences, the unintended, what I call unintended consequences, maybe we are finding that there are some flaws with that particular system. But now that we have the experience record, we can now shop around again and bring, as was my colleague mentioned, bring that insurance committee to it. In terms of the deductible, I think it's very much right, is that the deductible determines the premium. And that's something that can be looked at in moving forward to it. There's $3,500, reasonable, depends on the plan. You know, I think in my own self, I use a plan where I have a very high deductible, much more than that. That's it. The insurance cap piece is in part the board's attempt to set a fixed value that we know we would provide to everybody. And, you know, that's, I don't want to go too far in that because it is part of negotiation, so I don't, not really say where all we're going. But the idea of that is to fix a amount that we can plan on as a board and what we can, what the employees can do.
20 seconds.
And from that, then, we can move forward and negotiate.
All right, thank you. And Jessica Moffett?
Oh, goodness. Guys, that was the longest I've ever had to sit to be excited to answer a nerdy question about health insurance. For those of you who don't know, I spent eight years doing billing and credentialing for healthcare professionals. My husband is a licensed physician both in the state of Oregon and the state of Kansas. So I've been heavily submerged in the health insurance field and world for quite some time. I also had the pleasure of sitting in on one of the original meetings back in 2018, once the initial decision had been made to switch from Blue Cross Blue Shield to Aetna. And while I didn't see the negotiation parts, what I saw is a key element that was missed in this program implementation. And so as a certified health education specialist, the first thing we're taught on day one and day two, all the way up until graduation, is to always conduct a thorough needs assessment and make sure that you're satisfying the need of what's looking for. And with health insurance, price is a key determinant of what you're getting. And I believe that there might have been a little bit of excitement in the programs that Aetna offered, for the ability for discounts to be monopolized on for certain individuals by participating in health incentives, that made the plan look like it was going to be really awesome. But the reality of the situation is it's a huge financial impact on the teachers and thus on our community members. My deductible is not $3,500. It's a little bit lower than that. But, you know, we're having a kid this year. I understand. Those deductibles are not easy to meet and those premiums are not easy to pay. And I absolutely look forward to helping renegotiate and try again to find a better solution that thoroughly addresses the needs of our teachers as well as the financial impact for our school district.
All right, thank you. Next question, we will start with Alex Herman. And here's the question. While I do not have children in the USD 489 school system, I want what's best for the children. How do you engage and involve folks like me to support USD 489?
Well, I can relate to that. My children are actually enrolled in Holy Family. Brayden is in fifth grades. Samantha's in kindergarten. The whole reason that I ran for school board is the same reason everyone else should be personally engaged in this matter. And that's the concept that a rising tide raises all boats. Although my children are receiving personal benefit from USD 489 by attending school there, they do receive benefits. Those are indirect benefits by collaborations with the public school, with the private school, but also in the interaction with the individuals they meet. I'm a, I have a law firm with my father here in town. We have employees there. They are products of Hayes USD 489 public school system. I am receiving a benefit, just like all of us in this community receive a benefit from the school, even if we don't have children in the schools, even if we ourselves didn't even attend the schools. We want a community that has, everyone is as well-educated as possibly can be. You want to make sure that when you're going to the doctor's office, that your doctor knows what he's doing. Just like when you're having your garbage picked up, you want the garbage man to know what he's doing. If you're going to McDonald's and having a hamburger made, you want them to know what they're doing as well. All of these people, doctors, garbage men, people working in the fast food industry, all of them are products of a school system, particularly, and in this community, USD 489 school system. That should motivate everyone to be as involved as they can be to make sure the school district is the best it can be.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dr. Lori Hurdle?
I think that is a question that was asked of me. And my answer to that is everybody should, or can benefit, whether or not they have children or not, that attend USD 489. My children did attend USD 489. I'm proud of that. They got a good education from USD 489. But I think whether or not you have grandchildren, whether you don't have any children, these children that are coming out of these schools are bringing skills that are benefiting our community. And in order to do that, they're receiving their education through the school district. I understand that there's other schools in town, but USD 489 is one of them that is benefiting our students. So why should you be interested in our children attending or benefiting from the school district? It's because they are benefiting from the school district as well. And it may not be your child, but it may be somebody else's child. And they are reaching out and they are providing services to everybody in the community, whether it be elderly or young people or whatever. So yes, you should be interested. It's the right thing to do.
All right, thank you. Luke Oborni?
I think my start to this would be maybe a question back to that person, how engaged do they want to be? Because, not saying I put this all on the individual, but at the end of the day, that person can either be deciding, I want to be engaged, I want to do this, or I don't want to at all. With our bond attempt, I have done some door-to-door stuff, and I've really got the opportunity to meet a lot of different individuals, different people. And I've seen both of those. I've seen some that are just very recluse, very want nothing to do with it. They've raised their children, they've raised their children to the district, and they're done. But I'm going to go with the intent that this person is reaching out, or this demographic is reaching out with the intent to engage. And I would say, look for opportunities. And if you want to talk to me afterward, or superintendent is out there, I definitely think they're out there. You know, with a little help, you could be a para. There's always lunchroom help. There's numerous volunteer opportunities. You know, to say that we wouldn't need help would just be an outright lie. There's always opportunities. And for me, really, the schools are always what's most important because it's what attracts people. You know, in Hayes, we have a unique opportunity where we can live anywhere and provided the school has enough space to provide for that, or, oh, what am I trying to say here? Providing the school can fit that student in. We really get the choice of where our students want to go. And that's an opportunity we don't get anywhere else. There are so many places where people always have to choose where they're going to live because of the school. And we really want to build good schools. And, you know, if you live in Hayes, you, I think, I feel you would want that as well. You know, you want, you have good schools, you want to have a good pool, drinking water. To me, it's almost like a utility or something else. And I guess the last part there, too, is, you know, keep in mind, it doesn't have to even be in a volunteer thing, but, you know, just get involved. You know, last week, I was in this exact room for a concert for Hayes High School. And our orchestras were just amazing. It was just a very moving and very neat experience. So I mean, at the very least, you know, watch for concerts and other events and go and sit and just be involved.
Thank you.
All right, Craig Pallister?
Would you repeat the question for me?
Sure. While I do not have children in the USD 489 school system, I want what's best for the children. How do you engage and involve folks like me to support USD 489?
The other night, well, in fact, last night, when I was walking, going door-to-door, passing out my cards to talk about the election, I had several of these discussions around town. And I, at that point, I realized I'm one of those people that is retired. We have a lot of retired people in town that do not have kids in our school districts. We have families, and I had a lot of families answer the door that had TMP, Holy Family shirts on. And I talked about why it's important to have a strong public school system here in Hayes. Because when I was at the middle school, we would give tours from Hayes Med, from other businesses of prospective employees coming in. And then they would make the choice, but they were so happy to see that we had a strong parochial system, a strong public education system, because that is the climate of the community. These will be the students that move on through K-12 into the colleges and hopefully come back and be leaders in our community. So why is it important? Because we want a strong Hayes, Kansas, not just USD 489.
All right, thank you. Alan Park?
I would tell this individual, please reach out. It's also important for the board to be inviting and also to show our community that they need our help and they are willing to provide many opportunities. Many of you expressed some great opportunities through volunteer and just helping the schools in any aspect. KISA, which is the main state program that's going on right now, the Kansas Education Systematic Accreditation, one of their main elements is relationships. And so we need to provide those relationships and foster them and allow them through, whether they're seniors, through the rest home, and get our students in their different programs out in the community and invite them to participate. And I think that they're great opportunities. And I was here in Hayes, taxpayer, for 12 years before I actually had an opportunity to take advantage of it. And so, but I got the benefits from those USD 489 public schools, even though I didn't have children. But now, since the last 25 years, I've been very blessed. So please reach out and we'll do a better job of asking for help.
All right, thank you. Tammy Welbrough?
It will always be difficult to engage those people who don't care. So for those that have in their heart that civic servant leadership mind frame, I believe it will become an education or an awareness. Certainly, the engagement in terms of what is happening in the district will impact so much beyond the school buildings, the school walls. Business owners can recruit easier based on the quality of our education system. And those other business people that are, those potential employees are looking at our school system and making our school system and making decisions based on what they see and whether they want to move to Hays, Kansas or not. School activities, for instance, also bring in a slew of students, families, and participants or bystanders to our community. And if they are shopping locally, then those are dollars that are going into our city sales tax. And city sales tax, of course, is the funding mechanism that helps support our first responders. So truly, to have that awareness of this bigger picture of how the school fits into our community, let alone the quality of education and just that desire to build a better future, I believe will help a lot of people become more engaged.
All right, thank you. Dr. Paul Adams.
Well, I guess first I should say, I have four children who have graduated from 49, so I'm kind of biased what we do. But I want to hit back on another thing is that the schools now have the KISA, the Kansas Education Systemic Assessment, which one of the core elements, as previously mentioned, is relationships. And so I think part of what bothers me about that question is that means as a district, we haven't communicated what it is that we do and why we're important. Myself, I do employ people and interview people. And one of the critical factors that I've had and some recent hires is to say, let me go check out your school system. And when they've checked out, said, okay, I will come here because you have what I need to do it. So employees is part of it. The other is the emphasis within the KISA and the redesign projects, that we're looking at CTE pathways and really workforce development. And those are critical pieces, because as has been mentioned up here, is that without our public school, there aren't the employees, there aren't the people to hire. But more importantly, I think, as I'm moving up in age, is that I'm finding that I need those people to have the energy and the passion to keep our community moving forward, to keep us growing as a community. And that comes from educating the kids that we have today, changing the way we do it, which is what a board helps enact by its choices with funding. But it's also these individuals bring the new ideas that will help us prosper and grow. So if we don't take care about this, and we don't support it, we will only lose.
Thank you. Jessica Moffett.
I'm not sure who asked the question, but I just want to say thank you. Do exactly what you are doing right now. Let your voice be heard. You know, we need you. Our success is determined by it. There's a couple of statements in the school district guidelines that I think kind of testify to that, to the fact that the school district is an accurate representation, just as my colleagues up here have said, of not only just students and teachers, but also of our community members and our business owners. So Effective Schools Philosophy states that the district school shall operate with students, parents, and the community in a manner that promotes high academic achievement with care and concern for the individual. So at very minimum, engage care and concern. When the USD 489 school kids come over and knock on your door and they ask you if you'll buy that little $20 card, say yes. We save well over $20 every year when we buy them, but that's a great place to start. Let your voice be heard. It says, "A strong school community values differences in people and in ideas." I think there's a big misconception that the school district, or at least the board, has a particular agenda that we're going to pass regardless of what is said by those sitting in the audience. And that's not true. We want to hear your ideas, or at least I can say for myself, I want to hear your ideas, whether they're different than mine, or the people sitting next to me, or next to you. I want to know what's important to you and how you think that the community can better itself and by engaging in those and letting your voices be heard. I think that's a really great place to start, and it'll ultimately help us succeed as a school district and a school board.
All right, thank you. Dr. Cole Engel.
Okay, so the question was, how do you involve and engage citizens that maybe don't have a direct connection with children in the district? And I think the easiest way to do that is to just ask them to participate, ask them to get involved, promote activities, make sure that the district is communicating to the entire community what's going on. I think K-12 education is a public good. I think the entire state benefits from an educated citizenry, not just the USD 489 tax base, although I think more directly, the USD 489 tax base will benefit from that educated citizenry if we can keep those students here. I worry about students that leave and never come back, that were raised here. And so although it's probably good for some people to leave and get some good experience and come back, I think it's really important that we get the students to remember Hays as a friendly place, as a place that's supported education, so that they can come back to live here, to work here, to spend money here. Support their fundraisers, absolutely. Make them smile. I know that doorbell rings usually at the most inappropriate or inconvenient time, but they're disappointed when they walk away with their heads down. And so if you can support those fundraisers, they'll remember that. They'll remember Hays as a friendly place, they'll remember Hays as a place that supports education and supports the students. And really just show up, show up at the games, show up at the parades, the sporting events. But I'm certain there are plenty of opportunities for task forces and committees and other boards that need good people, that maybe are a little less directly connected to serve.
Thank you. Our next question will start with Dr. Lori Hurdle. And the question is, what trends do you believe are on the horizon in K-12 education? And how equipped do you feel USD 489 is to meet those trends and demands?
I'm so glad I got that question. One of the things that I've been really interested in is technology. And I've done my homework in that. I have checked with Shanna Dinkle on that and have noticed that we've got technology throughout our school district. I've been concerned about that because of the brain development and stuff like that, and that happens to be my field. But I have noticed that we have a real balance in technology in our school district, and that's a trend that is going completely through our school district, is that balance, which is excellent and has done very well in our school district. We have teachers that are working with students and reading books, writing down assignments, using the iPad, and other skills learned besides just the technological instruments that you would use otherwise. And like she said, it's not just a fad, it's something that everybody is doing. And if our students don't participate, they're going to be behind. And so that's something that I've been really interested in and have found that it's something that has been very, very, done very well in our school district, like I said before. And has a good taste, I guess. And everybody should be proud of our school district for the way they handle the technological part of our school district in USD 489.
All right, thank you. Luke Oborni.
Trends, that's kind of broad. What trends do I see for the next, for our future? KISA is going to be a big part of that. KISA has came about in the recent years, and honestly, when it first came about, I was a little confused. I'm reading through a lot of this stuff, and these directions and stuff is given by the state, and so much of this, I look back, and I don't consider myself old by any means, but I'm going, so much of this to me kind of felt that this should be more at the home. I think unfortunately, with our society anymore, that these things are not happening, and this development is not occurring at the home. And so the public has spoken both to the state and back down to the local level, that we want more of this to be developed in our schools. So that is a big part of KISA. It's come up already tonight with relationships. Another big part of that is being civic-minded. And that's really something, again, we're trying to teach into our students. And so it's really, no longer are the days of where we're just going to teach, you know, English or arithmetic. It's really more of a well-rounded individual. Certainly, technology is going to be a part of that. It has been a, I don't know if I want to say point of contention, but it's obviously been brought up numerous times in the past. Both the Hays Daily and Hays Post have asked questions about technology and our feelings on that. I did support the one-to-one initiative, I still support the one-to-one initiative. I feel that with, some of the comments have come out where you don't want technology just for technology's sake. I completely agree with that. But to completely erase it, I would bring great scare, because I want our students to be ready for the real world. And in the real world, you use technology. I don't care what that position is. Other trends I see are going to be CTE, we've talked about that tonight, with that technology pathways. And then either, and I'm going to throw this one out there too, is just funding in general. It's been difficult, and it's always going to be difficult, as long as funding remains such a large part of the state's budget, it's always going to be on the radar.
All right, thank you. Craig Pallister.
Trends, you know, there's a lot of different things coming through education every year, the newest, the best, but we need to look back before we start jumping into the trends is the number one really important thing in every student's classroom is the teacher. That's the number one most important. If you look at research, you have all the different programs, but it's that teacher. Is it the best person that relates to that student, can get that student motivated? So as we work through the new trends, we need to remember, the most important person in that classroom that affects student learning is the teacher. But we have those other trends that we have been talking about, is technology. We need to make sure that our students have the technology background, because though it will change by the time they get out of school, but they will have the background to keep moving in technology. Relationships, you know, they talk about how important relationships are, because there's very, very few people that work in a room by themselves. They have to relate to others. And not only others, but other groups, the community with that. And stress, one of the trends is being a lifetime learner. You know, we talked about the students that, the people in town that do not have students with them, but if you can come into our classrooms, come into our schools and help support and show that it is important to be a lifetime learner, that is one of the biggest trends right now. When kids say, why should I do this? Show them why they should be a lifetime learner.
Thank you. Alan Park.
There's, like we talked about before, excuse me, with the KISA and all the different components of that. Hays has had a long history of being on the cutting edge through grants and through teacher initiatives. We have tried a lot of new things. The, in the past, early childhood, Hays was one of the first communities that provided all-day kindergarten. And we have been on that, and now part of the state is to early childhood. And even though we've been a leader in that, we still need to do a better job and continue that support of our early childhood. We also, as you mentioned, technology, it's here and it's here to stay, and we have to make sure our students are prepared. And then we also need to make sure that our students who don't have the access to internet and computers at home, which is somewhere around 20% in many cases, that we provide that opportunity. When we first added computers and internet, that was one of the concerns, that kids can be able to go and get that information, and many of the students, their homework is done on computer. So that trend will continue to stay, we've just got to figure out to fill, figure out how to fill those gaps for those students who need it. Results, that's one of the things that KISA is looking at all the components, and we need to make sure that we use the local data, the state data, national trends, and see what is the best. And see that we need to make sure our students get that opportunity and they continue to grow.
Thank you. Tammy Welbrot.
While at the Chamber of Commerce, I was fortunate to be able to celebrate many milestones that the district had, whether that was with the ribbon cutting, or an open house, or what have you. And then, of course, to add on my own personal experiences of being a parent, I have continued to be just amazed at the ability that our teachers have had in the classroom to be able to incorporate such creative ways of being able to foster that climate of learning for the student, based on the student's needs. There are far more educated and involved people besides myself that know the trends. And I've been pleased, though, to be able to see it actually being put into place. Someone had told me on one of my visits that there's a new mind shift, and that is, are we, instead of preparing the child for kindergarten, we need to be preparing the kindergarten for the child? And I think that that is a great reflection of where we're at today in the Hays School District. And that really comes down to the infrastructure, whether that's the facility at play, or just the different things of the brick and mortar and the pieces that are within our buildings. Are we indeed keeping up with those aspects to be able to stay in touch with all of those trends that are really impacting the educational learning environment? And I think that's, more work needs to be done in that area.
All right, thank you. Dr. Paul Adams.
Yeah, so one of the things that's driving a lot of change within the state of Kansas is the Kansas Can redesign project, or lovingly called the Kansas Moonshot. But what that really involves is looking at what we do in schools and reorganizing. And across the state, there's the Mercury I, the Mercury II, and the Apollos that are school districts that are embracing change. And that change can be organizational change, curriculum change, to come ready for the future. Now, we have not chosen to pursue that at this point, but it may be something that we do need to do to ready ourselves for those changes. Because the changes that are being made are fundamental, you know, emphasizing problem-based learning, experiential learning. With something we could do, it's here today, it's going to get bigger, but we can do it because we have the skilled teachers who can be ready to do that. Another push that we're seeing is VR, virtual reality, and augmented reality within the classroom. Though it seems to have, like many things, it had a peak, it fell, and it's coming back, but what I'm seeing in my profession is that this is going to be a serious game changer. Again, we've been there, cutting-edge technology with the one-to-one initiative, but also our teachers who are staying with it. The CTE pathways are playing a more important role, but those require, the career technical education, require high level, high degree of knowledge with technology that comes on. One of the areas that I think is, it's not just a trend, but it's being driven across that, is computational thinking and the use of coding in school. We've been doing some things within the school that are great, but I think that's a, it's more than a trend, it's an imperative to do that. It's both a right and responsibility to do it. And I think that's something that we probably are not quite there yet, but easily can be.
Thank you. Jessica Moffett.
The first thing that I'd like to do is just look at the components of trend, or the definition of. We've got advancements, developments, statistical trends, or trends just as in style, the kids might say. But I think the fundamental aspect of all of these is to really build our core, to expand, and then to expand from that with any remnants that we have left. So really to make sure that we're looking at the core. And I think the key piece to this is that our core values, those core necessities for success in a community are constantly changing. So when I was in school, cursive was pretty awesome, and it was really exciting. My sister did not learn cursive. That's something that we constantly have to keep up with, more than keeping up with the Joneses, but just keeping up with the demands of our community. And I think that's the first place that we need to look at. And I think the USD 489 School District is already doing a wonderful job of looking at that by talking to the CTE teachers and looking, you know, we've met the core requirements for these art programs and these CAD programs and developing vocational skills, but are we really setting them up for the core requirements that are going to exist in three, four, or five years from now? And that's where we need to focus our efforts at. And then when we're looking at these trends, are we looking at the tests and exams and college preps that determine the trends successfully on a statistical level? Or are we looking at the success of our students as they walk across the stage? And I think that is where the emphasis needs to be when we're looking at, are our trends doing what they need to be doing in the USD 489 School District?
All right, thank you. Dr. Cole Engel.
Okay, so the question was about trends. Okay, so the question was about trends, we've been talking a lot about technology, and I've got a few things to add to that, so I think that's what I'll focus on as well. I think technology in education is important, I think it's necessary, but I also think we need to be careful, and we need to make sure that we use technology as a supplement to, not a substitute for, a high-quality curriculum. I think sometimes we get hung up on the flashy new tool, and we fail to focus on the educational goal, if there is one at all, for the purpose of using that tool. So we really should not be using the tool because it's new and flashy, we need to use it because it's helping us meet some type of educational objective. I see in my classrooms at post-secondary, here at the university, that students who are technology-literate are more efficient, they do better, they're safer, they're more secure. There's so much information that's out there, but that doesn't mean that it's accurate, it doesn't mean it's legitimate. Not everything on the internet is true, right? So I think technology literacy is a big deal, and making sure that they can use the devices appropriately, making sure that they're staying safe, making sure that they're staying secure, and just so much access to information. We need to be able to filter that information and sort out what's true and what's not, and how to use those sources and cite those sources, and just making sure that it's appropriate. And I also think we need to be very careful about screen time, depending on the age of the students. Obviously, there's people who know way more about this than me, but some students are going to get a lot more screen time at home than others, and we have to think about that when we figure how much screen time they're getting at school, and then they come home and get more screen time. And frankly, sometimes the old-fashioned paper and pencil way is the best way to learn something.
All right, thank you. Alex Herman.
When we're talking about trends on the horizon, there's really two things that I feel this question is about that I want to discuss. First would be the standards in the school. As we all know, teaching today isn't the same as it was when you were in school, and that is true regardless of your age. Obviously, there are continuing changes with standards related to education, and we need to make sure, as a community, that we put our educators and our administrators in a position where they are best able to keep up with those standards, regardless of where they come from, to make sure we're not falling behind. The other issue that I feel is talking about is use of technology in the school. I thought Luke O'Burney made a great point, when he talked about technology for the sake of technology is not a good idea, but nevertheless, getting rid of it is not the right solution either. We need to make sure that our students aren't afraid of technology, are comfortable with it, so that they are able to use it once they are done in school and in their professional careers, but at the same time, investing in technology, just because it's the shiny new object, as Cole talked about, isn't a fiscally responsible decision for the school either.
Twenty seconds.
We need to make sure that we keep up in the continuing arms race with technology, while at the same time, making sure that we're doing it in a fiscally responsible way.
All right, thank you. We've had some really great questions tonight, so thank you all of you for submitting those questions, but I want to close and wrap up with just a short time for each of you to give a closing statement regarding your interest in serving on the USD 489 School Board. In the interest of time, since we are a little bit past eight o'clock, I want to limit those to one minute, and we will start then with Luke O'Burney.
I guess for me personally, I'm going to start with a thank you. If you're here tonight, you're probably a registered voter, and some of you at least voted for me. It's really been an honor to serve on the school board, and for me, like I said, it's just, the job isn't done yet. It's an honor to be here tonight, it's an honor to be here with nine very qualified candidates. One of the biggest reasons, and I kind of told you my goals and why I'm still running, but one of the biggest things, too, is I'm of a mindset that when you borrow something, you give it back in a better condition, or at least the same condition as when you left it. And again, I just don't feel that job is done. One of my personal things I love, if you know me at all, is quotes, and so, one of my favorite quotes is from Gandhi, and it says, "Be the change in the world you wish to see." And so when I originally saw the election, it was really because I wanted to change a few things.
Twenty seconds.
And I've kind of talked about those already. I really feel we have a good start already, but I'm really excited for what the next four years could bring. I greatly appreciate your vote and support, and anyone who feels that they didn't get a question answered tonight, you know, go out to the website, you can find my email address, and definitely reach out to me.
All right, thank you. Craig Pallister.
I want to thank a lot of people that made this possible tonight. I look back at my notes, when I started, I forgot to recognize my wife, who is a retired teacher and librarian, and my compass, to make sure I go in the right direction throughout my career, so thank you. Hays USD 49 is an exceptional district that all members of the community of Hays should be proud of, and we need to hear that more often. I will go back to what I said at the beginning, we need a public relations position that tells what your kids are doing in the classrooms, what your schools are doing in the classroom, and what the board would like to do as a community, like our facilities. So we need to get, be transparent and get all of this out, and I want to thank everyone that works for USD 489, and just say, thank you for what you do in every classroom, every day.
All right, thank you. Alan Park.
This has been a great opportunity tonight. I'd like to thank the Student Government Association and all the sponsors for making this event possible. I'd like to thank all the candidates for your willingness to serve, I appreciate you doing that. Kids and family first will be my driving force as a member of the school board. I believe my experience as an educator parent, and my knowledge of the district, staff, facilities, and the history will serve me well as your school board member. In a few weeks, you'll have the opportunity to vote for four individuals that are up here tonight, to help shape our district's future and your child's education. You've heard a lot of information this evening, the fact is, we need to get to work and make USD 49 better and stronger, because our kids deserve the best.
All right, thank you. Tammy Wobrock.
The heart of our school district is the children and their educational environment. Thus, if elected, any decision I make will ultimately be founded in this philosophy. In my experience, the best decisions result from healthy dialogue and collaboration, thus having an open mind of various issues is critical. Today, there is a greater burden and expectation placed upon our educators to teach morality, basic life skills, and emotional stability, all of which were previously taught within the home setting. In addition, our schools are also responsible for caring for youth with disabilities, physical, emotional, mental, requiring different levels of credentials, infrastructure, and resources. When considering USD 489, I believe our Board of Education should be cognizant of these ever-changing, complex issues, and foster a culture of support and understanding when making decisions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dr. Paul Adams.
Okay, well, thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight with the citizens in USD 49. It's fantastic to be up here with all the other candidates. As citizens of 49, you have quite a choice. You have to, you have four votes to make, and those votes are based upon what you hear tonight, what you read in the media. And so I encourage you to choose those four that you feel best represent what you believe our community needs. A school board is about as local as you can get in terms of politics, because a school board controls not just the tax dollars, but controls the education of our youth in our community, and then also controls the future of our community. So when you go into the ballot box on November 5th, exercise your civil liberty and vote for the four candidates you feel are best going to lead our district.
All right, thank you. Jessica Moffett.
Ultimately, I hope that as you walk out these doors tonight, that you feel motivated to let your voices be heard, whether you are a teacher, a parent, a student, a community member, or a business owner. I hope that you feel you have the successive Hays in your hands. Please, take the time to register to vote, I do believe the deadline is tonight. Ask us all of the questions that you have, ask us now, and ask us as you see us in the community, and then vote, and continue to ask your questions. Send us emails, leave a comment with an administrator, attend our school board meetings, whatever is within your comfort zone. Whatever you do, let your voice be heard, and thank you for letting us represent you.
All right, thank you. Dr. Cole Engel.
In closing, I'll reaffirm from my opening statement that I'm not sure I'm the best candidate for the Board of Education, but I do think I'm a qualified candidate. If I'm elected, I will certainly do my best to faithfully fulfill the duties of the office. I promise to study the issues, to gather the feedback from district stakeholders, and to make informed decisions that benefit students first. If I'm not elected, then I trust my competition will do the same. A new governor with an increased funding commitment, a new superintendent with hopefully fresh ideas, and potentially several new board members with a commitment to working together to improve working conditions for the faculty and staff, and ultimately, the success of our students seems like a formula for much future success at USD 49. With the commitment of good people, I see no reason why USD 49 would not be able to appropriately address public school challenges as they arise. Thank you again for the opportunity to participate in this forum.
Thank you. Alex Herman.
Thank you. The future of our community will be shaped by the decisions we make today. Do we want a community with a third-rate school system, or do we want a community with a strong foundation, with an education system that is properly preparing our future leaders to take up that mantle? I believe in this community, in its people, and our schools. If elected, I plan to help develop a plan for the future, to make sure it is fiscally responsible, and to make sure we have a firm footing for the future. I will work for the best interests of the community by providing great teachers, great infrastructure for our school. At the same time, I will honor my commitment to make sure your money is not wasted, but properly invested to ensure we keep taxes low, to make this an attractive community for those here now, and who will be here in the future. Thank you for your time tonight.
All right, thank you. Dr. Lori Hurdle.
Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. It's an honor to be here among all of these qualified candidates, and I thank them all for being here as well. To summarize, I feel that I am qualified to be here as a candidate for the USD 49. I have had students who have, or children who have been students at the USD 49, and have been very, very close to the school district in that respect, and have been able to open my eyes to many programs that are out there, and would be willing to be very happy to represent the community for USD 49 as a candidate, or as a school member for the community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you to all of the candidates for participating in this forum this evening, and thanks to all of you for attending. We encourage you to also attend our Hays City Commission Candidate Forum, which will be next week, on Tuesday, October 22nd, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., right here in Beach Schmidt Auditorium. Thank you all, have a good evening.
Thank you.[1783.33][1783.33][applause]